We begin tonight with the lead pledge by Councilwoman Andrea Ruckauski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilman Gabbout.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Ruckauski.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Okay, just one announcement on your agendas today. Item F in the consent calendar was withdrawn by the administration, so it will be not up for the council to discuss today. With that, we'll move into comments or requests from the public. This section will allow a person we recognize only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda at the meeting. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Is there any input on my right? Any input on my left? Sir?
Richard Graham from Westland and also with Move Westland Forward. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council, and also Deputy Mayor Reddy. Regarding item 1 on new business, with Robert Kelly being appointed to the DDA, a couple questions came about as residents reviewed this. Is this the same person that had some type of issue over a Kevin Coleman for mayor sign back in 2000, I think in 17? Also, was this person at one point in time, or still is, in the Westland Motor Pool? If so, may be a possible conflict of interest.
Regarding item 4 on new business and the allocation of sanitation funds from the tax increase for the recycling education initiative, it looks like it's around $40,000. The interesting thing is this is coming in around middle of October when the millage passed around the first of March. Not quite sure why there is a significant delay of approximately eight months to get marketing information out to the public, which really probably won't get to them until probably around November. So, curious of why the long delay. I know there was rumors about getting a grant. I assume that grant did not come through, but, you know, per a FOIA that I did, just in July alone, the city spent, of our tax dollars, $18,448 for the additional cost because the trash had too high of a content of unwanted items like glass, et cetera. So, great that we're doing it, but I guess why was the administration so slow to do this and to enact this, you know, roughly eight to nine months after it passed? Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Seeing none, we'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move into the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
No, 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 no.
Motion by council, President Protem Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items: approval of minutes of the regular meeting held October 5, 2020; approval of minutes of the study session held October 5, 2020; approval of contract with Brain Media Technology for management of the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center Learning Lab in the amount of $42,000; approval of annual licensing subscription renewal with City Works related to workflow management applications for various city departments in the amount of $76,500. Last item approved on the consent calendar: approval of renewal of annual email spam filtering subscription with Sendio Technologies in the amount of $9,634.78. Moving to new business, item 1: confirmation of reappointment of Robert Kelly to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term, with that term to expire October 19, 2024.
So move.
I have a motion by Council President Protem Londo, supported by Councilman Gabbout.
MJ, do you... We had some questions about whether Mr. Kelly works for the Motor Pool.
Thanks, Council President. Thanks, Council for considering Mr. Kelly again to the DDA. Mr. Kelly does a great job in his business and with the DDA. No, he does not work for the... Currently worked for the city of Westland. I know he did in the past, and I can't even begin to how to even answer the first question, so we won't even bother with it. But, as you can see that with these positions and appointments come scrutiny, and I'm sure you'll get through it, you got thick shoulders. So, thanks again, Mr. Kelly. Appreciate it.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council? Any dissent? Roll call.
Councilman Gabbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruckauski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, Mr. Kelly. Look forward to having you on the DDA. Again.
New business, item 2: approval of grant for a 20-foot-wide access easement for Garden City Hospital, 35700 Warren Road.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Ruckauski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mo?
So, what's up on your screen highlighted in orange there, and this is pertaining to Garden City Hospital's request. They're directly next door to the east of City Hall. They're renovating a building to house a community health center, and again, they're requesting a 20-foot-wide access easement to the north, the back of their building on the adjacent city-owned property known as, I'm not going to say the parcel ID, but it's just directly adjacent to the new fire station there along Central City Parkway. The access easement is for purposes of the ambulance and other delivery services, potentially trash trucks, kind of navigating the site as indicated by my arrow right here. So, they're going to enter in, navigate here. There's an overhang where they will drop off patients and then exit the site using this access easement back onto their property through a curb cut located in this area. So, they have agreed to maintain the easement through the winter, plow it, salt it, and also do minor repairs as necessary. They have also agreed to some other terms as it relates to some utilities in that area. And this easement will be in place legally, running with the land, so long as the property is used for a health-related land use. And the administration is recommending approval of this, and if the city council approves, recommends that the city attorney record this as a easement that runs with the land tied to the health land use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. Is there any discussion from the maker?
I... I'm sorry, Council President. I forgot to add that Joe from Garden City Hospital is in attendance if you guys have any questions. Thanks.
Any discussion from the supporter? Got to find the button, Peter. Getting used to it again. Go ahead.
Thanks. I support the item here. I just have a quick question to the administration. We're kind of giving up 20 feet of the northerly portion where it borders a city-owned lot. Do we have any sort of plan on, or any preliminary discussions on what's going to happen with the city-owned parcel of the former service merchandise?
So, not at this time, but in that 20-foot-wide easement location that's indicated in orange on your screen, exists a 15-foot-wide water utility easement underground, too, so there can be nothing built in that area. So, it needs to remain as it is today, be paved or grass planted. So, in the event of future development on the city-owned parcel that you guys actually split, making up this approximate square here, you can't develop this area regardless. So, while it still could be a setback utilized for the new development, it cannot be developed on. So, it does not really impact future development there.
Thanks, Mo. Appreciate it. Is there any other discussion from the council? Councilman Londo?
Thanks, President Hart. Thank you, Garden City Hospital, for the investment in the community, and thanks for the invitation to have us come out and take a look at the site, to see what, you know, what your plans are and how the site looks. I know Councilman Gabbout and myself were out there, the mayor and the administration were out there. So, we really appreciate you having us out and, again, answering all our questions, and I'll be in full support tonight. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 3: approval of proposed land combination and division, four parcels as identified in your packet, south side of Ann Arbor Trail between Inkster and Middlebelt Roads. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Support by Councilman Londo. Mo?
Thanks, Council President. The subject parcels here consist of vacant site commonly owned and located on the south side of Ann Arbor Trail between Inkster and Middlebelt. You may remember this as the former, I believe, Cooper School site, currently contaminated with some methane gas vents protruding out of the ground there today. The site is currently zoned R5, single-family residential, and currently made up of four separate parcels arranged in this fashion on your screen, totaling approximately 10.5 acres. The applicant today is proposing to combine them to make one big parcel, and then the request in front of you is to split them into seven developable residential lots for single-family homes, excluding parcel 1. This is not being developed at this time for single-family, potentially in the future. Some background: there have been several attempts by various housing developers, most recently Lombardo Homes, to develop some sort of single-family... Well, we've had single-family subdivision here and also multifamily, but several environmental, specifically wetland inventory analysis kind of resulted in that not being financially feasible due to the wetland areas. So, this is what the proposal is today. With your permission, Mr. Heath, who was in attendance, would like to combine and split it in this fashion to build those six single-family homes. The Planning Commission reviewed this request on October 6 at its public meeting. No one was in attendance that expressed opposition, so the administration and Planning Commission are both recommending approval to you.
Thank you. Mr. Heath, the petitioner, do you have anything you want to add before I let the council start asking questions? Would you like to come... Is there anything you'd like to add, or would you like to address the council at all? You can say no. You can say yes. It's up to you.
Do you have a half hour or so?
Oh, you wouldn't be the first.
It's been a very difficult piece of property to work with. We picked it up, I did, back in 2011, and we have entertained over that period of time probably 12 different offers. Eight or nine of them have been written. The others have been verbal, and I've accepted every one of them, and we just can't do anything with that property. The old Cooper School that was torn down, that was the big stumbling block for most of the offers originally. We have discovered some wetlands on the property, and they're running away from that. And just to say also, if you're driving along Ann Arbor Trail, heading east from Middlebelt towards Inkster Road, that piece of property that La Vona Schools owns is a nightmare. They've got those big methane 10-, 12-foot pipes sticking up out of the ground. I know they can't be removed, but they've got also that 10-, 11-foot-high old cyclone fencing, and the... It was going to be originally set up for soccer fields, I believe, and that was sort of laughed at when brought up by this, with the school board and some meetings that I had. It's padlocked. You can't get in there. They have no intention of opening up, but I've been told that they could lower them methane pipes down. There's no requirement that they had to be that high. But if they could lower them down to four feet and do something with that fencing along there, that would clean up that whole area along there. And there is still Cooper School that was built across the street from it, but that's just something for future use.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the maker? Mr. Hersberg.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Are you planning on building on all seven parcels? Or are you going to leave...
All six, the six. Parcels 2 through 7 right now.
You're going to leave parcel 1 open for future...
Yes.
I see you're leaving kind of an easement.
There's a 60... I believe it's a 65-foot easement going back to that property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion from the supporter? Any other discussion from the council? Mr. McDermott?
Good evening. Quick question. How does your potential future development impact the wetland that was discovered there in the area?
Well, the wetland area sort of starts back on the western boundary, about 300 feet back from Ann Arbor Trail, and it won't have any effect. It sort of pockets itself right there about halfway along that western boundary, and then crisscrosses the property going over to the eastern boundary, but all at least 200-plus feet back from Ann Arbor Trail. And the lots we're looking to do would be like 160. We're looking to go 78, I think it is, by 160 residential lots, which are nice lots.
So, it looks like parcel 1 is a part of the wetland area. The parcel 1 that's not going to be developed at this point in time?
At this point, no. No, no, no.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
New business, item 4: approval of allocation of sanitation funds to support the city's residential recycling education initiative.
So move. Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is that correct? Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith, we had a question relative to the funding source and timing.
Sure. Through the chair. So, initially, recycling started back July 1, as council notes. There was a question and answer put on the city's website. More recently, there've been some education flyers put in with the water bills. So, the timing of this, obviously, with it starting July 1, the city really didn't know what to expect. So, they really didn't want to go into a big education program unless there was a need. So, we did the initial education. Obviously, as council was aware today, the need is there. So, this will hopefully eliminate, or maybe not eliminate, but reduce the amount of the contaminated boats going to the recycling facility. So, this is a pretty detailed, I guess, step, necessary step at this point.
Is there discussion from the maker? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yes, President Hart. Just briefly, thank you, Mr. Smith, for the explanation and what he was referring to, to the residents. I'm not sure. We went out, the council, a few of the council members and the administration went out today to Republic Waste, to their MRF, which is the material recovery facility. Two Westland... We actually got a tour of the entire facility, and then we got to see two Westland trucks show up, dumped, and see what was actually in there. And I'll tell you right now, I'll let the other, my other colleagues speak as well. It was eye-opening at what some of the residents are putting in their recycle bins. We've got to talk about it over and over. Plastic bags are not recyclable. We saw so many plastic bags. We saw couch cushions. We saw lawn and leaf debris. We saw a stump. I got a picture of Council President Hart with a big log stump out there. So, that doesn't go in your recycle bin, so obviously, there's a huge need to get the word out to the residents. And as Mr. Smith mentioned, we did do Facebook outreach. Many of my colleagues on the city council shared information on it. It's been on WLND. We talk about it at the council meetings. We've sent some information, some frequently asked questions... Excuse me. The administration sent some information to the homes, frequently asked questions. We refer people to the simplified recycling simplified website, as well as our website with information. But there's a strong need for this, after seeing what I saw today, there's a strong need for this education initiative, and I'll be in full support.
Thank you. Is there a discussion from the supporter?
Thank you, Council President. I just got a couple of questions. The first one to finance. When did we find out we weren't getting the grant to fund this?
Chair, on the grant, I am not sure when it was discovered that we were not getting the grant. I do not know.
Okay. Well, I do have a couple more questions about this. We just want to make sure it's done right. I think we all up here support it. So, we're talking about putting labels on the containers. Who's going to be putting those on? I see we're doing clear doorknob bags. We're buying those. Who's going to be putting out this information on homes? Do we have any sort of plan as to a group that's going to be formed to do the educational portion?
MJ?
Yeah, through the chair. We're pounding council's approval tonight. We're putting the plan together. We pretty much got it set of how we're going to distribute the materials. Once council approves it, we're going to assemble 30,000-plus bags with all the educational materials in the bags, and then distribute those bags to all the homeowners, along with the stickers on each container, recycling containers, and some follow-up after that. So, if council approves it tonight, we'll be able to finalize our plans, and we'll let council know what those plans look like when, again, once we get approved tonight. Thanks.
Thanks. My question was really, who's going to be distributing these materials?
Through the chair, most likely right now, it looks like Department of Public Service will distribute the materials, along with members of the administration, and certainly any volunteers from city council.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, again, we just want to make...
Maybe the fire department, police department would like to volunteer, too.
Yeah. Again, we just want to make sure it's done right. So, it looks like we're going to be putting these on doors, and then we're going to expect people to put the labels on. Did the administration consider maybe going down streets on garbage night when the recycle bins are in the street and putting the labels on at that point, or are we just going to go as we can?
Through the chair, that's exactly what we're going to do. So, we are...
I want to make sure.
The city is, again, most likely through the Department of Public Service. We're going to put the labels on. The thought was, if you put them in the bag, some people don't get their bags. They may recycle the bags without opening their bags. So, we're going to actually put the labels on each container. There's going to be some that ain't going to be out when we do the first wave. We'll hit the second, third, fourth waves to make sure that we put the stickers on. In the event that they're not home, we'll certainly leave the stickers with them in the bag, but our intent is to try to hit every container that we can, and we'll do that ourselves.
Okay. I appreciate the info. I'll be in support.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Green, I see you're late, son.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to add discussion to our tour that we took today of Republican Recycling Center. It actually was very eye-opening in terms of the amount of contamination that the city got hit with, specifically because of the amount of materials that were... In some, in one truck, most of it was actually trash. And so, that truck was completely marked 100% contamination, and so the city will be charged and overaged for that. So, being able to walk through the facility and take a firsthand look of not only the process of them separating it and processing it, but also determining whether or not it's even recyclable, was... It was very informative for me. I'm sure my colleagues would say the same. And I, for one, know that I probably would have had a whole lot more questions if I had not seen that myself firsthand this afternoon. So, thank you to the mayor and his administration, and Republican whoever was responsible for arranging that tour. And we also are able to identify certain, which areas of the city that most of the issues, so to speak, come from. So, I would hope, through the chair, to the deputy mayor, that the city of Westland maybe takes a more aggressive approach with contacting some of those residents, whether it be knocking on doors in certain areas of the community or giving courtesy calls. I don't think that the issue that we're seeing is because residents are doing it deliberately. There was one point in the city that we stopped recycling for, I want to say, at least a year or more, or close to a year, somewhere around a year on average, and we instructed residents to put everything... It didn't matter which can you put it in, because we were taking it all to the landfill. That's no longer the case. So, it's just a process of educating our residents in terms of us offering that resource or service, and then doing it in an effective way so that it does not cost us more than what we're budgeted to spend. But it was, again, very eye-opening, and I look forward to us helping our residents help the city. So, I also will be in support. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ruckauski?
I'm also in support. However, I have a few reservations because we're putting bags on doors and visiting the MRF today. One of the biggest items contaminating everything was bags. So, that kind of struck me as, you know, ironic. Through the chair, to, I would want to say, our, excuse me, IT department, would that be possible for us to add a section to our Click and Fix app about some of the items that are recyclable? I think today, everybody's walking around with a smartphone in most cases, and it would be easy to check on your app about what may or may not be recyclable. I think it's a good effort, putting out stickers and magnets. It's definitely needed. It was just astounding what was, you know, disposed of as so-called recycling, but I would, you know, my hope would be that we could find a more green alternative to how we're... or additional way of getting this point across. That's it.
Greg?
Time is a little low on this. Through the chair, all things are possible in this world. So, yes, we can put information about recycling on the Click and Fix. We can add a button to it that will basically say recycling, and it will take it to, say, the simple recycling page, or simplified recycling page. So, yes, it can be done, and it's something that we'll definitely look at doing.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion from the council? All right. I'll just echo what my colleagues have said. So, it was quite eye-opening to be there at the facility watching the trucks open. There's some stuff that came out that doesn't even begin to even, you would think, that might be recyclable. Tree stumps, bike tires, pillows, couch cushions, and not just a couple here and there. It was actually pretty bad. We've talked about this before, and I kind of brought it up. When in doubt, throw it out. Put it in the black can. There's only so many limited items we can put in that recycle bin. And I'm here to tell you, if you don't want to put, if you want to participate in a recycle bin, I mean, I'd love, maybe we talk to the mayor and say, "Look, if you don't want to participate, fine. Maybe we figure out a way to trade your blue can out for a black one." But if you're just going to use your blue can for an overflow for trash, you're hurting the city, and you're hurting... for an overflow for trash, you're hurting the city, and you're hurting your neighbors, and you're hurting everybody when you do it, okay? We pay six times the price per ton to deal with contaminated load, as we would just sending it to the landfill. I don't want to send things to the landfill that can't be sent to the landfill, but I can't ma, we can't maintain, in my opinion, this path, this process forward, so whatever education programs we're putting together, they need to be effective, and we need to probably lace up our shoes and our colleagues, and also walk our neighborhoods, I think we all know how to walk and knock on doors, so maybe we walk and knock on doors and talk about, you know, keeping our neighbors, at least educating them, if they see you face-to-face, it's going to make a difference, and that's going to be part of this program that the administration's putting forward, you know, so us working with the administration, us doing these educational programs, and us keeping each other honest, and these, talk to your neighbors, everybody at home, everybody in the audience, talk to your neighbor to your left, talk to your neighbor to the right, kind of tell them what's going on, there's going to be a video coming out, WLND is going to show you what we saw, so you guys are going to see some of that too, it is disturbing, so we need to kind of up our game, all of us, we're all in this together, so please, 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 we wanted recycling back, this is what we have to do to maintain it, is put the appropriate things in a can, otherwise, it's just a race to the bottom, so I'll be in support of this, is there any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Business item five, approval of voucher.
Support? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman McDermott, was there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We now move into comments or requests from the public, everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner, speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting, personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, or other speakers, or even members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker, and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time, however, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right? Sir?
Blessings, blessings, this is Pastor Edward Pruitt here, with a Better Westland, and I have four quick topics to speak on. The first topic is, we really appreciate the focus on education, community education with recycling, that was one of the Westland Six, community education, we want to continue to push that even further, let's talk about racial equality, equity, also marginalized community within disabilities as well. Point two, thank you to Chief Jed Rusik for quickly addressing a gotcha ticket, is what I call it, regarding bicycle registration, he quickly responded to that, I'm calling on all council members to look through the ordinances, and go through and see which one could be used to target people, it's very important, this was one of those, not sure if it was the intent of the officer, but it is one of the issues that need to be addressed. Point three, I actually, I'm going to skip to, no, actually Columbus Day, the city was closed for Columbus Day, that has a major concern with me, because there have been ideas about Columbus that causes issues, and so, many in the community and nation practice Indigenous People Day, and so, even though they closed the city council, that's okay, but do it for the right reasons, do it for the right thing, let's not denigrate other people by representing something that is not factual and true. Lastly, there are people on Newburgh who are protesting for fair, equitable, and livable wages, Four Seasons, they are out there, council, and people, men and women, have showed up and in support of them. We have found, when I went out there, that there are potentially alleged illegal or unethical activities coming out of that facility, I'm calling on the council to look to them, have a conversation with them, have the mayor's office, because he's already called them, to have a conversation with the employees, to get to the point to find out what's really going on, and be a beacon of light for the people, that's what I have for today, thank you.
Hey, is there anyone on my left? Blake?
Okay, hey, guys, I just wanted to come up here, and let you guys know that I had them working with a Better Westland, and it took, I think, about a month or so, but I created a resource document that's kind of updated, and it shows people how to get resources, I did not print any out, but I will definitely have some at the next council meeting, and then we were actually going to be doing a canvassing event, because I also have other information from GWIN, so I just wanted to let you guys know that, but the information is on Better Westland, it's also on my public page, Black Person Advocate, so I just thought I'd give you guys some good info, so, thanks for what you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left?
Lori Wilson, Westland, I want to congratulate Westland Police Department and Chief Rusik for receiving the NAACP Community Partnership Award last night, I want to congratulate, that actually, I want to congratulate and thank all those who actually supported and participated in the event last night, it was the first one that was virtual, it was the 23rd Annual Freedom Fundraiser for the NAACP. There's only 14 days left till the election, so whether you're doing a write-in as in absentee ballots, or you're actually going to the polls, don't lose your ability to vote, vote, do what you can to make this world a better place, because right now, you got issues, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else on my right? Ray?
I think I wasn't going to speak tonight at all, but I guess I will, Jeff, I did saw something like that today in the paper or something, congratulations to you, and your police department, and by me wanting to say, Westland is doing well, I mean, the police, because I saw one of them yesterday, introduced myself to him, and we talked for a minute, and then he gave me respect, I give him respect, and he, he said, he really appreciated, what I told him was, you're saving lives out there, and I want to really say thank you, all of you, that's what I said, ladies and gentlemen, and the police department doing a great job, so is the fire department, so he said he'll get the word out there, he appreciates it, and anyway, my concern was tonight, I was looking forward to this F for the Disability Concern Board, I don't know what happened, but I would like to know, so, thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Richard Graham from Westland, and would move Westland forward, a few items regarding the comments by Pastor Pruitt, when I saw the information on Facebook today by some of the council people regarding the Four Seasons, you know, I did a little bit of research, what's troubling is, it appears that the owner of the Four Seasons is a pretty heavy contributor to Mayor Wild's political campaigns, so that's kind of discouraging, also, there was an article maybe a couple of months ago about the Marquette House, and it seems like that owner also was a heavy, also a contributor to Mayor Wild, and also served on the DDA, so maybe needs to be some, you know, investigation internally, within the administration of, you know, campaign contributions, and then also, you know, supporting, you know, businesses that seem to be having some issues, especially with the elderly, and also with some labor practices. One of the items we're seeing some emails about and getting some messages is, and I think it was said, all things are possible, by the IT director, I marked that down, because I was curious of if we can do these meetings also virtually, there's a lot of people that can't attend these meetings, some with disabilities, some that just can't get out of the house, so all things are possible, so it'd be great to have the meetings also shown virtually, like we were doing, it can be done, it's probably pretty easy to be done, at least in my opinion, and that would really be, really the compassionate thing for a compassionate city to do, to involve more people, because the more people you have, the better in our government. Columbus Day, just as a reminder, most, the state wasn't closed on that day, most cities weren't closed on that day, and typically, directors, et cetera, that's an extra payday, they get holiday pay for that on top of their salary, so please keep that in mind from a financial standpoint of maybe why those things are done. Last comment, really regarding recycling, a great job Councilman Landau for making those comments, and really kind of covering up for Mayor Wild's stumbling and bumbling with this. I guess I'm shocked to hear that the majority of people on City Council Administration thought that the residents would do a great job, and would, and we wouldn't see these really significant cost issues associated with not recycling correctly, shocked, because it's averaging $9,000 a month for extra pay every month, at least because, at least for July and August, for not having proper marketing, and even with that, I mean, it started in July, the numbers started rolling in in July of $9,000 in July, $9,000 in August for the extra pay, why is it the middle of October now, without anything being done with getting this moving? Excellent point about the plastic bags, why aren't we doing paper bags, and if we're that concerned about the environment, why not paper bags instead of plastic? Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right? Judy?
Okay, every time I turn around and I listen to this program, there's people that say, the mayor's been in office for 20 years, well, guess what, I went to politicalgraveyard.com, and Sandy was the, was the mayor up until 2005, or later, I think it was 2006 when she was made a judge, so let's quit accusing the mayor of being there 20 years when he hasn't, and I think that's about it, but I'll learn more while I'm home.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my right? All right, we'll close citizens' comments, and move to the comments from the administration, Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Council President, thanks, Council, just got a quick piece tonight. One, just to like to welcome Fire Marshal Hall tonight, we haven't seen him too many council meetings tonight, so it's good to have a new face every once in a while, so welcome Kelly to the council meeting, and Mr. Kelly, again, congratulations on serving back in the DDA, again, sorry about the little bit of scrutiny there in the beginning, but we know you'll do a good job and serve, thanks, we appreciate that, and last, council, as you know, the Halloween event has had to be canceled this year because of COVID, so City Hall, along with West LA, won't be to do the trick-or-treating for the kids, so we're encouraging those who do trick-or-treat, just practice safe trick-or-treating this year, and have a safe and happy Halloween, and that's all tonight, thanks, council.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, any words from the attorney's office?
From the city attorney's office.
Thank you, we'll begin with council comments tonight with Councilman Hersberg.
Yeah, just one brief comment tonight regarding the bicycle registration ordinance, I saw the email from the chief that, you know, we're going to relook at that, just want to share some thoughts with the rest of council, me, Councilman McDermott, and Councilwoman Green have agreed to meet, to look at it, I know there's been some talk about kind of just taking the ordinance out, I don't think that's a good idea, you know, based on the conversation that took place over that ticket, you know, there is, there are other issues we do have to deal with, there are a lot of motorized bicycles in Norwain and other neighborhoods and things like that, we're trying to deal with pedestrian safety, so at this point, I would like to see us amend it, maybe not make it required to get the registration, and also add in some other language about motorized bikes to maybe require registration for those, and make sure that they're following the stop signs and other traffic rules, again, you know, there was a lot of discussion about public safety and things like that, I don't want to see this ordinance removed, I think we would benefit from updating it. The only other comment I have tonight is to Ray regarding item F, I'm not sure why it was removed from the agenda, I'll look at it for you, and I support you as chairman of the Disability Concern Boards, so that's it for me, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Green?
Thank you, I'd like to start tonight by just reminding the public that everyone in the state of Michigan can now early vote, so you can actually come to the clerk's office and register to vote, and also fill out your absentee ballot and early vote, so that is something that is available right now, you don't have to wait until Election Day, but you're very welcome to do so. Speaking of Election Day, if you are voting by absentee ballot, and you have not returned your ballot to the clerk's office, please do so immediately, it would definitely be best if you delivered it to the clerk's office, however, if you are not able to do so, today is October the 19th, please put it in the mail as soon as possible, if you're not able to have someone bring it to the clerk's office, there was discussion in terms of whether or not a postmark buffer would be put in place for ballots, that was a, a, Michigan court has ordered that there will be no delay with counting ballots, so if your ballot is not in City Hall by 8:00 on Election Day, General Election Day, which is Tuesday, November the 3rd, your ballot will not be counted, so please bring it in if you can, come in and early vote, or put it in the mail as quick as possible, if you have not already done so. Also, as a reminder, there was a new law passed with a lot of the things that are being discussed, and unfortunately, going on throughout our state and country, the state of Michigan has recently passed a ban on open carry guns at or near polling locations, and that is something that, according to Attorney General Dana Nesso, will not only be enforced by her office, but also the state police, so just wanted to remind people who might not have been aware of that, open carry guns are banned at election polling locations. Speaking of Four Seasons, the strike that is taking place at the nursing home down the street, I had a chance to go up there earlier today, I come from a union family, and I'm all about people standing up for what's right, no justice, no peace is within the fiber of my being, but I had a chance to speak to many of the people who worked, or who currently work there, one lady in particular has been there for 31 years, receiving approximately a 25-cent raise per year, if that, and these people are the ones who are taking care of senior citizens, you know, many of them who are no longer able to take care of themselves, they are, they're frontline workers, they are putting their life on the lines to, on the line to care for our loved ones, and in my opinion, they should receive a wage that is fair, if it is not, had it not been, or if it is not for hard-working and dependable employees, companies would not be successful nor profitable, so when it comes to making a decision in terms of penny-pinching these people who have families just like us, you know, I am not in agreement with that, so I was not only out there today, I will be back out there tomorrow, and I'm going to continue to stand with them until they get the justice that they should get as hard-working frontline employees, and if you are not, due to the pandemic, inclined to do so, or not able to do so, you can drop off supplies, you know, they have certain things out there, but if you wanted to drop off refreshments, or even join the line, they would appreciate it, or if you're not able to do that, if you are in support of employees being fairly compensated, if you happen to drive by, beep your horn and let them know that you're with them, that little bit will make a difference, because as you know, all of us more than likely have our heat on at home, so it's pretty cold outside, and they're outside asking to be paid fairly, and actually, they're only asking for- they're only asking for, they're not asking for that much money. So, I put the details of the amount of money and things that they're asking for on my Facebook page, and you can take a look at it for the sake of time. Councilwoman Tasha Green, and you'll see that I just can't understand why we would, why that, why there even, there's a need for them to be out there today. So, I stand with them, and I will continue to stand with all employees who are fighting for justice and for unions who do so for their employees as well. Lastly, I wanted to, I just mentioned there, Mr. Graham referenced virtual meetings as an accommodation to residents. I actually agree with you. I think that the, that was one of the benefits that actually came out of the pandemic, if you can even call it that, was the ability for many of our residents who are not able to get to our meetings regularly to be able to jump on a virtual Zoom meeting or to be able to dial in from home and get their concerns answered. I actually appreciated that. And most municipalities are not having in-session meetings. We're doing so in the city of Westland because the council president and the administration are able to mandate that we come in and have in-person meetings. But most municipalities in the state of Michigan are still doing virtual sessions for, due to the pandemic and for safety reasons. And while there was an order that came down from the Michigan Supreme Court that were not in agreement or in support with some of the executive orders that Governor Gretchen Whitmer made, that verdict from the court does not mean that the pandemic is gone. Their order did not wipe the pandemic away. So, we're still in the midst of a pandemic. There are people still getting sick. There are people still dying. And so, to make a courtesy to, or to allow for a courtesy to let people visit or frequent our meetings, not only for our convenience, which was a large part of why the virtual sessions occurred, but also for their benefit, I think that we should, should do that. And frankly, if it were not for this mandate, I would not be in here. And I am not comfortable sitting in here. There's been studies that have shown that this Plexiglas does not protect people. It has not been found to protect people to the extent to where medicine will state that this is safe. So, while none of us have gotten sick, I pray that none of us do. I pray that none of our guests do. And I would be in support of virtual sessions returning until there is no such thing as a 14-day invisible virus that can potentially kill people. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. I'd like to start tonight by congratulating Chief Jed Rusick and the entire Westland Police Department for receiving the Community Partnership Award from the Western Wayne County NAACP at last night's virtual fund, Freedom Fund fundraiser dinner slash dinner. And also, Lori, I know you were on the committee. They did a great job putting it together. It had to have been tough getting all the videos put together and all the preparation that went into it. So, please extend to Gina and everyone else on the committee, my congratulations on putting together a very nice event last night. Rob, thank you for continuing to serve on the DDA. You do a great job for us, and it's very much appreciated. So, thanks. And then, we've had some discussion on recycling. The, you know, and I've been to Murph's multiple times over the past number of years, but the, the condition of the loads that were coming in from Westland were beyond anything that I had seen previously in any of my visits to a recycling center. To even think that some of the material that was in a recycling bin was considered recycle, recyclable material goes beyond anything that an education program could, could put together and overcome. There was clothing. There was bedding. There was large stumps, building material, construction material, none of which was allowed previously, none of which has ever been considered recyclable material to go into the collection bins. So, while I'm hopeful that the education and, we did, you know, we did cable, we did Facebook, Instagram, letters out in the water bills. We did a number of things previously. So, now we're going to try a more direct approach with the, trying to get labels and on the cans, some magnets, and some more further discussion about what's recyclable. I'll tell you, if it doesn't turn around as far as what the, what's going into the blue bins for recycle, we're going to have to take a hard look at just what means we can do to offer recycling to the residents. Because the way that those loads came in today is not sustainable, not even close to being sustainable for a curbside recycling program. And that's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rukowski.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to echo once again, congratulations to our police chief and the entire department on receiving the Western Wayne NAACP Community Partner Award. One thing that was mentioned during the event was that our city is on the forefront of bringing transparency to the community, especially in the state of Michigan. I think they said that we're one of the first cities to implement that. And so, I'm looking forward to seeing that in action and what else Chief Jedrusik is going to do to continue the spirit of transparency. Congratulations, Mr. Kelly, and thank you for your service. I say it every time somebody is appointed to a commission or a board, that your active participation in our community is what drives our success as a community. So, thank you. This recycling visit, I'll tell you, it was, you know, we've all said, you know, those of us that have attended, that it was eye-opening, and it certainly was. And, you know, there, we did anticipate a learning curve. I don't think we anticipated quite the learning curve that we were literally shown this afternoon. So, I won't go over all the items, because you've heard all the different things that were included in the recycling. But it won't be sustainable, and I don't want anybody's tax dollars to be for naught, right? So, one of the things, you know, the educational aspect is great. We've done a lot of things. I'm still going to advocate for an app or something that's electronic to minimize additional waste. And I think we have to also look at how we're utilizing our bins. We were giving bins out because, at one point in time, recycling made money. It doesn't create revenue for your city anymore. So, I, I'm a proponent of saying, you know, maybe we might have to turn some of that. If you have a lot of waste in your home and you're not recycling it, or you're not recycling it well, then you might need a different system. You might need another garbage bin. So, I liked what Council President Hart said, when in doubt, throw it out. And it's surprising how many things really should just be thrown out. It is 14 days to our election. It is October 19th. I would bet to say that mailing in your ballot, if you choose to vote absentee, is not going to be efficient at this time. Please just fill out your ballot, flip your ballot, vote once, sign your envelope, and drop it off. Now, make sure that if you're utilizing the absentee voting system, that you're, you know, if you requested a ballot, please fill it out, and please, you know, do your best to bring it in, because you want your vote counted. And lastly, happy birthday, Council President, or Pro Tem on Saturday.
Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening, and thank you. So, in regards to the recycling program, recycling is the tip of the iceberg for what we need to do in terms of sustainability, protecting our environment, combating man-made climate change. And it's something that I want to make sure that, and I think we all want to make sure that we get right here in the city of Westland. So, I did not have the chance to go, but I saw some of the pictures that my colleague showed me from the aftermath today, and it wasn't pretty. And there's, you know, two loads that were, one was, I think, 30% spoiled, and one was basically 100% spoiled. And so, yes, the stickers on the bins is something that several of us have advocated for on numerous occasions, and it's, you know, probably later than we would have hoped to get that implemented. And, but it's better late than never to get that through. So, I will certainly, you know, raise my hand to volunteer to go out and do my duty to sticker the bins and make sure that, you know, our residents know when they're dropping something in a bin, hey, that's acceptable to put in that bin, or hey, that's not by the sticker on their bin and by the overall education program that we're going through. Want to just give a reminder that we are still in the midst of a pandemic, as my colleague Councilwoman Green noted here, and people are still out of work, and people are still struggling to, you know, put food on their table for their family. And while we've had Gleaners Food Bank here in the city of Westland on certain special occasions, they are not here 24/7/365. However, we do have the Salvation Army that I want to remind people of here in Westland that you can access for resources to help your family, specifically to food assistance. And also, over in Taylor off of North Line Road, Gleaners has a location where you can visit as well to get food assistance for yourself or for your family. We know that many families are still struggling, that one or more people in a household may be out of work or may have had their hours reduced at work. So, putting food on the table can certainly be quite a bit harder. So, we have our couple of different options here with the Salvation Army here in Westland, with Gleaners, who does special events here in the city, and as well has their location on North Line Road in Taylor to access as well. In regards to voting, it's been brought up a couple of times here tonight. Please, 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 if you still have your absentee ballot outstanding, bring it here to City Hall. If City Hall is not open, you're not able to drop it off directly with the clerk's office, you can go to the drop box, which is located here at the side of City Hall, and you can securely place your ballot in the drop box and make sure that it gets returned and gets counted by the November 3rd election. But please, this is, this is it. If you have your ballot outstanding, don't mail it in. We know that there have been numerous delays with the United States Postal Service, and we want to make sure, as my colleagues have said, that your vote counts and that, you know, you get it here on time, so your vote counts. In addition, if you still have your ballot outstanding, make sure to flip it over and vote the nonpartisan section of the ballot as well. That includes the Michigan State Supreme Court, Circuit Courts, appellate courts, and that also includes our school board here in Westland. Or if you are in the Livonia portion of the district, the Livonia Schools also has an election for school board. So, please make sure to vote on the nonpartisan section as well. If you choose to vote straight ticket, that unfortunately does not capture any of the nonpartisan candidates. So, while there may be judicial candidates who are endorsed by the respective Democrat or Republican parties, simply voting straight ticket does not capture those votes. So, make sure to vote for the nonpartisan section, judicial candidates, and school board as well. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilwoman Green. I was also out there today with the SCIU workers who are striking over at the Four Seasons and had the chance to, you know, go down the line and talk to many of the workers and kind of get their thoughts, and really what their concerns were regarding the, the pay or the lack of pay that they feel they're getting, the working conditions, the lack of PPE that's being provided to them, especially at a critical time like this, when we're dealing with the COVID pandemic. We want to make sure that everyone has the proper PPE necessary, but especially those who are dealing with our most vulnerable people in society, the elderly, who are oftentimes most affected by the coronavirus and by COVID. And we want to make sure that, you know, Four Seasons and that company is treating their workers with respect, with the pay, with the dignity that they deserve. We want to make sure that the wage that they're being paid is frontline essential healthcare workers, because that's what they are, frontline essential healthcare workers. Do they make a livable wage? Minimum wage is not a livable wage. If we had a $15 an hour minimum wage, that would be potentially up to a livable wage, but I digress, because we do not have that. So, they've been working without a contract for two years over there, for two years. And to me, that is incredulous and is unacceptable. We wouldn't want any of our city employees who are union members to be working without a contract for two months, let alone two years. And they've been working over there for two years without a contract. Additionally, they delayed this strike by over a month. They were originally anticipating striking at the end of August and delayed that out of good faith to negotiate with the owner of the Four Seasons. And unfortunately, they're still out there with no contract, and they have gotten to the point of striking. So, as my colleagues have said, you know, if you can, go out and stand in solidarity with them, you know, work with them to help them get a livable wage, to get the proper PPE, to get the respect that they deserve from management. Go out there, if you can donate some supplies, some food, some bottled water, whatever it may be. Or, you know, if you don't feel comfortable, as was mentioned previously, drive by and honk your horn and just show some support and show some solidarity for, for the workers out there. Again, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, too, in regards to our Westland Police Department and Chief Jeff Jedrusik, and getting the Community Partnership Award from the Western Wayne County NAACP chapter. Obviously, the Freedom Fund Dinner was a little different this year, as we weren't able to be there and, you know, enjoy it and celebrate in person the accomplishments of Chief Jedrusik and the department. But I think it, I think it's, you know, noble and laudable that you guys were, the department, not just yourself, but the department as a whole, was given that award. And, you know, a great job by everyone who put on the Freedom Fund Dinner, even if it was virtual and, you know, a little different fare this year. And then, I would also like to just point out something that Pastor Pruitt said in regards to Columbus Day. You know, just me personally, Columbus Day is not something that I celebrate. I do believe it is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Long before Columbus setting sail on the ocean blue and coming here on the Nina de Pinta and the Santa Maria, we had an indigenous population that was here already occupying, already living within what we now call the United States, Canada, Mexico, North America. So, I think, you know, it is respectful to honor the indigenous people, their contributions long before the white man came over here to the Americas, and really recognize all that they lost, all that was taken from them, all that was stolen, and unfortunately, you know, the lives that were lost, in addition to the land that was lost. Most importantly, the lives that were lost. So, I would like to see in the future, you know, potentially the city of Westland honor, even if we're going to close, you know, our buildings and facilities that day, honor it as the holiday that it should be, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And with that, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McDermott. We move over to Council President Pro Tem Landau.
Thanks, President Hart. I'll start off tonight by congratulating Mr. Kelly on his reappointment to the Westland Downtown Development Authority. You've done a great job serving as chairman. For those that don't know, I used to be the chairman of DDA. So, I'd take a close look at what you're doing and then try to offer feedback when I can. But I think you've done a great job, Rob. So, thank you for, again, for stepping up to serve. As many of you may know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I want to thank my colleagues in administration that joined me in wearing pink today to support Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Many of us, if not all of us, have been affected by cancer in some way, and hopefully, one day, we don't have to have this fight anymore. We talked a lot about the recycling plant, but I want to thank Councilman Godbout, Councilwoman Green, and Rukowski, President Hart. And I know Councilman McDermott was there, and he had to take off for work or something, so he wasn't able to make it. But thank you to those, and then the administration for attending today. The mayor was there, along with his, members of his administration. And again, there'll be a lot of education on this, on this visit. You'll be seeing a lot of it on WLND. It's eye-opening, and it would really give you guys an opportunity to view what we saw today. For the seventh or eighth time, Chief, congratulations on the Community Partner, Partnership Award from the Western Wayne County NAACP. I was able to attend virtually the 23rd Annual Freedom Fund Dinner. I've went for the last three years or so, and it's a great event. You did a great job speaking, and like Councilwoman Rukowski said, they really, really hold you in high regard. So, thank you. The Westland Fire Department, it's interesting that Chief Eggers is here. I had this on my list today already. And LA Elementary, my former elementary school, their first graders and families, want to give a huge thank you to the Westland Police, excuse me, Westland Fire Department Public Awareness Committee. During distance learning, the teachers discovered that most of the families had smoke detectors but needed new batteries. Knowing how important it is to have a working strong, working smoke detector, the first grade teachers reached out to the fire department. Within a week, Chief Eggers replaced batteries for all of the first grade families at LA Elementary. So, thank you, Chief Eggers, for doing that. That's appreciated. And then, a lot was talked about the Four Seasons nursing home. I, too, would like to see a resolution on that. I drove by earlier. I had to get to work, so I did exactly what Councilman McDermott said. I honked profusely. But I'll try to get out there as well and stand in solidarity with them as well, because they don't deserve the treatment they're getting treated with. So, that's it, Council President tonight. So, that's it, Council President, tonight. Get out and vote November 3rd.
I'm shocked. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin this evening by first thanking Councilman Andrew Rakowski for leading us in the pledge of allegiance, and then, of course, congratulating Mr. Kelly again for your reappointment to the DDA. It's a job well needed, and it's a job that we appreciate that you do. So, thank you so much. Wanted to, we talked about, a lot about recycling. I think you've heard it ad nauseam, but please believe us, we were just all floored by what we saw. So, again, I'm going to beseech you, talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, check yourself, and then, let's all work on this together. It's going to take a community working together to get this fixed, okay? When it does come out on WLND, do give it a look and see how you feel about it. I venture you will feel like I felt and understand I'm sitting there as a council member at the floor as the Westland truck rolls up, and it opens up its load, and kind of a little embarrassed, to be quite frank with you. So, I think we definitely can do better, and we just need to do better, and I know we will. We'll just have to work together to make it happen. It is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so thank you for all my colleagues who wore pink. We've all been touching it one way or the other. Linda's a breast cancer survivor. Michael Londo lost his mother. God bless her soul. And there are a lot of other folks here that have been touched by it, and some people even currently fighting it that we know. So, all work together. It is, keep them in your thoughts, keep them in your hearts, and keep them in your minds and prayers. Let's see. Chief, I'll be the eighth. NAACP, congratulations. We enjoyed watching the show. We enjoyed watching your video and your presentation. It spoke volumes to the professionalism, candor, forward thinking, and transparency of your police department under your leadership, and I think your entire department works together, and they work hard to demonstrate the award that they received. So, well-earned, well-deserved, and good job. Let's see. We did get a grant. So, we were talking about all this recycling. We did get one grant, however. We just received a $50,000 grant. So, if you guys know, we do have the recycling drop-off facility. So, if you don't want to wait to put it in your recycle can, or you got some other things you want to take to the recycle facility, over on Marquette, near the DPS yard there, we do have a drop-off facility. We just received $50,000 from the Eagle Grant, so we're going to put that into some signage, we're going to put that into some other programs, I think some paving, some lighting, anything that we can. We wanted a lot more, but we got something better than zero, so the administration's going to work together to kind of improve that. So, we're really wrapping our hands as much as we can around this whole recycling thing. So, we'll all have to work together, but, you know, having that drop-off facility improved and, quite frankly, making sure people know about it. Still, a lot of people, surprisingly, don't even know we have it. So, we have one, trust me. It's there. Go check it out. With the bicycle thing, you know, that kind of came up a little shocking. I think we can talk about that. I thought it was odd, you know? I don't like the compulsory registration. I'll just go on the record and say that compulsory registration, I thought was, I get the intent, I get the spirit, you know, so the kids can get their bike if they come up missing, but if a compulsory component of the registration, I don't think is necessary. And if there's no compulsory component, then I'd be interested to talk to legal about what an ordinance does if it has no compulsory component or no punitive parts of an ordinance. So, it probably wouldn't be an ordinance at that point, but it's something we can talk to. But if there's no compulsory piece of it, I don't think it's an ordinance anymore. So, but we can talk about that. And as far as that, I mean, I could go on and on and on. There is one thing, so we always like to talk about what's going on in the city. So, this Friday, October 23rd, join the Great Lakes Ghost Hunters as they help you conduct a paranormal investigation at the Westland Historic Village. Tickets are available on Eventbrite for $40, okay? So, that's from 7 till 11 this Friday, and it does say for adults. So, I didn't say what the cutoff is for adults or a kid, so I guess use your best judgment. If you have any more questions, you can go ahead and contact that, but it is something that's going on in the city this Friday. And before that, I want to wish everybody a happy, safe, and healthy Halloween. For those who are going out, try to social distance a little bit. I know it's kind of hard to calm the kids down when they're running door to door to door to candy. I have a hard enough time teaching my kids, even after they got, you know, 13 and stop trick-or-treat and quit walking across people's lawns. I'm that guy that makes you go down to the sidewalk and back up, so. But do your best to make sure the kids are staying distant from the other kids while they're trying to get their candy as best you can. But if you can, and it's within your purview to take the kids out and take them trick-or-treating, I ask you to. Kids gossen off a lot this year, and they didn't ask for it, so try to give them a little something if you can, as safely as you can, but give the kids something. They deserve it too, right? With that, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up today. Love everyone's comments, and I love all the discussion from my colleagues. They always participate very well. So, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Big Dermott.
Yes.
Big Dermott. Rakowski.